I'm going to go ahead and call us to order and declare that we have a quorum of six members present. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven, tonight's six trustees, in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Members of the board, we'll begin this meeting, as we do all of our regular meetings, with the pledges of allegiance to the American flag, Texas flag, and a moment of silence. And here to lead us this evening are students from Southwood Valley Elementary. And here to introduce our pledge students is the principal of Southwood Valley Elementary, Kristiana Hamilton. This is Hamilton.
Good evening, everyone.
Good. You have to talk about that.
I thought my voice was loud enough. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kristiana Hamilton, and I am always proud to say that I am the very proud principal at Southwood Valley Elementary School. And I have with us tonight some of our fantastic, fantabulous students here. First, we have Mr. David Garavito. And I'd just like to tell you a little something about David. David is now in third grade, and David just started talking to us this year. And I am proud because I'm proud of our speech department, I'm proud of our dual-language department, and I'm proud of all of his teachers that have worked with him. Now, it's not that he couldn't talk, he just wouldn't talk. But not only does he talk to us now, he even teaches Ms. Hamilton dance moves every afternoon. We have next with us Ms. Madison K. Part. Madison is a fourth-grade student in our dual-language program. Madison is an excellent swimmer. She is 10 years old, and in being 10 years old, she informed me that, Ms. Hamilton, I have never gotten a haircut. So at 10, I don't know if she's ready to dive into that yet, or if she's going to hold on just a little bit longer. But we have with us a fantastic student, Madison K. Part. And lastly, we have Ms. Malia Pleasant. And gosh, Malia makes me feel some kind of way because Malia's brother, father, used to spend a night at my house all the time playing basketball with my son. So I am very proud to have her. She's an excellent student who loves science, and she loves to sing. So Ms. Hamilton will be dancing, swimming, and singing when it's all over. So now I present to you our students. Come on. Can you get it? There you go.
Good evening. Please stand as we say the pledge of allegiance to the United States flag. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on. There we go. No. And now for the pledge to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, indivisible.
Please bow your head for the moment of silence.
You have to take a picture with the board members there. Thank you all so much. A total of nine College Station ISD musicians performed this past weekend at the Texas Music Educators Association Clinic and Convention as a member of All-State Choir, All-State Band, or All-State Orchestra. These musicians were chosen for this prestigious honor through a competitive process held earlier this school year at the district, region, and area levels. More than 70,000 Texas students entered the All-State Competitive Process, and only 1,780 students are selected to perform at one of the 15 All-State Ensembles in Band, Orchestra, and Choir. That's only the top 2.5% of musicians who initially enter the audition phase become All-State musicians. All-State is the highest honor a Texas music student can receive. When I call your name, please come forward to be recognized. And we will go with Mr. Harris right there, who will shake your hand. You'll come this way and shake our hands, and if parents want to take pictures, please do so. For All-State Band, McKenna Allen. Jeremiah Arenas. Taryn Hairston. And we would like to recognize and bring forward our two band directors from College Station High School, Eric Eeks. Congratulations. Moving on to All-State Choir, we have one recipient from College Station ISD. Would you please come forward, Grace Moore. And we would also like to recognize her choir director, Emily Ramos. First is Eric Gann. And we would like to recognize the two orchestra directors from College Station High School, Jason Hooper, and from CONSOL, Jane McCormick. You know, musicians take part in a lot of hard work, and they're not just good in music, they're good in many things. And they're very busy, and we're so thankful that you've been able to join us this evening. Let's give one more hand for our All-State musicians on College Station ISD. Mr. Harris, that concludes our recognitions.
While everyone's finding their seats, I'll direct your attention to the artwork on the back wall that's been provided by students from South Noel Elementary, Southwood Valley Elementary, College Station High School, and College View High School. If you get a chance, take a look. It's amazing how talented our students are. Next item is the Consent Agenda, which is item G, H4, J1 through 10. Does anyone wish to remove any of the Consent Agenda items?
I would move approval of the Consent Agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Next is item E1, Board Directions and Reports, Announcements, and then Superintendent Report and Announcements. Does anyone have any reports or updates or announcements?
I do. School Health Education Council, is it SHC? Well, I thought it was School Health Advisory Council. Okay. They are going over the wellness plan, and they will be updating that in the next couple of weeks. They're continuing to work on the health education for seventh grade, and they've had a couple of guest speakers over the last couple of months, and they are getting their recommendations ready to present in April. And then also DEIC, updates were given, plan monitoring, and then also they're starting on the new recommendations for next year. Lots of good work.
Thank you.
This isn't an update really from a committee, but a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Schaefer and I had the privilege to go over to CONSOL and take part in, I guess they had a chili cook-off. And it was, I'm getting some affirmation here, probably from some CONSOL students and teachers. It was really, really great. It was to commemorate the opening of a really beautiful, or what will be a beautiful garden, wildflower garden, in honor of Christie Cheshire. And it was, it was just a lot of fun. They had a lot of quote-unquote "celebrity judges" there for the chili from, from really around the area, and it was just, it was a lot of fun. Some money was raised, and a lot of good memories were shared of Mrs. Cheshire, so it's a good time.
That's great. Thank you.
I have a couple of updates. The Education Foundation, so 50 Men Who Can Cook was a huge success. Happy to report that we netted $230,000, which is a record for 50 men, and, and also the most ever attendance, so there's 1,900 in attendance. So Theresa wanted me to make sure that I thanked everyone for their support. We'll be hosting, or the Education Foundation, Education Foundation will be hosting a donor reception celebrating the Education Foundation's 20th birthday. So that will be April, I'm sorry, March 5th at the Benjamin Knox Gallery. Also, we will be taking scholarship applications through March 1st. This year, we'll be awarding 67 scholarships totaling 86,500. So a lot of scholarship money going out. And to apply, definitely visit the website, give2kids.csisd.org. As far as the Head Start Policy Council, we met last Tuesday. It was my, obviously, my first meeting as a board member, and was just amazing to have all of the parents, community members, staff, and administration there representing this great policy council. Some updates that I wanted to share with you, so I didn't know this, but the Head Start has a soccer unit that they're, they're coming up, and they actually go to the different campuses and play each other. So I thought that's, I love that. I think that, you know, start so young, getting the kids involved. Also, they are going to have a Spring Fling, April 5th at Veterans Park, so for families and children, and everyone is invited. So that's the, the theme this year is a sports theme, so they're working very hard on that, on executing on that event. Also, we discussed, and I believe Penny is going to give us a report, on the recommended eligibility requirements for 2019, 2020. This was probably the biggest part of the, the meeting that we discussed, very specifically who could be eligible to get into the Head Start program. So a lot, a lot of great discussion, a lot of parent discussion and involvement. I was, it was very, very moving to be in that room, listening to the point system and how it should be allocated and that type of thing. So I know Penny will give us more of an update on that, but yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
I actually have a couple from Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Schaefer sends his regrets for not being able to join us this evening. He did want to mention that on January 22nd, he attended the IGC Intergovernmental Committee Meeting, and at that meeting, there was a presentation of the 2019 Community Health Assessment for the seven-county area of which Brazos County is in the middle of. And he also wanted to talk a little bit about what Mr. Nugent talked about, which was the Christie-Cheshire Celebrity Chili Cook-off at CONSOL. Obviously, Mr. Nugent's talked about that, but Mr. Schaefer wanted to specifically recognize Coleman Maxwell and Megan Schlatter for their work in emceeing and organizing that. They did a tremendous job, so I just wanted to make sure that we gave recognition, that from Mr. Schaefer.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, that takes us then to the superintendent report. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Members of the board, just would like to talk a little bit about where we are in the legislature. We've got less than 100 days of the 140-day session to go. Work is beginning, especially in regards to House Bill 2 and Senate Bill 2, which have to do with property tax reform, specifically revenue caps, and those would affect cities and counties and school districts. Every one of the legislators that has come to town this, this year, all 181 of them, and the governor, have talked about the need to address property tax reform and address school finance. We have the property tax reform stuff out there, but we are still waiting on any type of school finance bill. We thought we might have one this week, now we're hearing that we're not. So maybe next week, by the last week in February, we will have a beginnings of a school finance plan that will emerge from House Public Ed or from the Senate and talk about what it would look like as far as a new state funding system. There is a commitment, I am emboldened, I am heartened that, that people are coming to Austin this year wanting to really work on, on positive solutions to, to funding. As many people in this room are aware, in this school district, College Station ISD, we're projected to give over $14.4 million, about $14.4, $14.5 million back to the state of Texas this year, which is more than the money we receive from them. So we obviously are in tune and interested in, in what the state's going to come up with and how it would improve the situation for all 1019 public school systems in the state, but most especially College Station ISD. We will continue to monitor that as well. This was the first House Public Education Committee meeting today where they started to look at other bills being filed, so we'll get a report on what happened earlier today as House Public Education started to look at some bills. We are obviously looking at school safety legislation that's moving forward and monitoring that. We're looking at assessment accountability legislation that's moving forward. And so, as I said, it's still pretty early in the session, but the last day to file legislation is, is March the 15th, so that's coming up pretty soon. And as, as we see some of these bills start moving through committees, we'll, we'll see what we have. The governor did name school finances one of his emergency items. What that means is that they can start the process earlier with, with earlier committee hearings, and so hopefully we'll be able to, as I said, respond to whatever is before us in regards to that in the next week or so. But that's really kind of where we are with the legislative update for right now here in, in mid-February. The last thing I want to talk about is an upcoming event, it's a very special one for us. You know, we're Aggies here, so we do it once, it's happenstance, twice, it's a tradition. This is our second year to do Future Family Welcome Night at our elementary schools, so it is our newest tradition in College Station ISD, and that will be March the 28th at all nine of our current elementary schools. We're going to welcome our new students and new families to the area and just talk about all the great things that are available in College Station ISD as a school system and in our elementary campuses. So look forward to that. As I said, that is March 28th. I would love it, board members could come on out, maybe visit a campus and help welcome those new families to our school system. That's my report.
Great. Thank you. Item F, Hearing of Citizens. Do we have any cards? Takes us to H1. Receive a report on Advantage Math Recovery and Math Instruction. Dr. Ely.
Mr. Harris, members of the board, it's our pleasure to bring an update on our mathematics instruction in College Station ISD, specifically the Advantage Math Recovery Intervention System that we use and the training that we provide for our teachers at the, at the elementary, intermediate, and middle school levels. We have Jennifer Smith, our Coordinator of Mathematics in the school system, to take us through the information and share with us. So, Mrs. Smith, welcome.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Harris and the board members, thank you for the opportunity to share about our journey that we've been on with Advantage Math Recovery. And as we get started, some of the elements that I'll go through are the description of our program, major goals and activities of the program, some performance data, some program challenges, and some needs and changes for the growth of the program. Description of the program, there's three main components. It provides a unique approach to professional development for improving elementary numeracy, instruction, and student achievement. It also supports our K-5 mathematics assessment and teaching through innovative approaches to understanding children's mathematical thinking, and it provides teachers with resources to analyze and modify instructional tasks to meet the needs of our diverse range of students. This expertise allows teachers to customize any of our commercially bought mathematics resources to specifically meet the needs of individual students in their class. So one thing, one thing to think about is it's not just a program for intervention, which it does serve that role, but it's getting to know how kids think about number, especially in an earlier age, and to be able to move in and out of a learning progression as students learn how to put those pieces together. And so, so that's been an important element as teachers are learning about mathematics and to be able to see what is happening with their students in their classrooms. One of the quotes that is shared with our participants is a quote that the CEO, at the time when I went through training, shared, and those doors mean something. On all their materials, there's doors on the front of it, and it says, "With relentless curiosity, we invite you to open the doors, unlocking the potential and possibilities within each child. And through their persistence as they're learning and inquisitive pursuit of understanding, our teachers will make a difference in transforming numeracy education in our school district." To give you a little background, since the last time I spoke about our journey was in 2016, it's been a little bit of a time, and that was when we first started the, the training with our classroom teachers. And so, some of you weren't here then to hear about that, so I'll share. There's two courses. The first course includes components within addition and subtraction, structuring number, number sequencing, and number identification, laying the foundational pieces of how kids put numbers together. It's more than just counting to 100. There's a lot of components, just like when we learned to read. The second course, which is, you have to have the Course 1 in order to move into Course 2, covers the conceptual place value as well as multiplication and division concepts. The monies that we use to be able to provide the training and the materials comes from our Title II Part A federal budget, and it really covers the cost of substitute teachers. Some of our teachers have chose to take the training during the summer, so they don't miss out in their, the students' time with their kiddos, and so, because the training is four days each, and so they, they've decided that I'd rather do the training during the summer on my own time, I can marinate and think about the things that I'm learning and that sort of thing, as opposed to missing four days in the, in the classroom. And then each time they come to one of the trainings, of the initial training, they get a course that has materials in it with the resources and things that they can implement. If you look at this slide, you can kind of see the monies that we have used. The 1415 school year was our very initial piece where we took our math specialists at the time and some of our resource teachers, and they did the initial training to be able to implement it into their, their arenas that they're working with intervention specifically, and then also special education resource classrooms. And then if you look at the 1516 year, 1617, and you'll see a larger component because we had more teachers actually participating in that training, and a large percentage of that was partly from the substitutes and then also the kids. Each of the kits cost about $400, but the nice thing is if a teacher moves away, then we can do a reuse kit, and it only costs $45 instead to be able to make sure that teachers can use that. So that's one of the reasons that you can see the number is going down in 1718, and then also 1819 when it comes to our budgets. The staff involved includes K-8 educators, as Dr. Ely said earlier, and, and that includes our general education as well as special education educators, specifically the math specialists. And then the other piece to keep in mind is the numbers have varied per campus because of campus needs. Some campuses may ended up sending more people to training, and then some campuses chose to do less, and so we're still building that capacity to have all of our teachers to be trained in AVMR. And then also, I'm involved because I am our district AVMR champion trainer. I've had the background and the study to be able to implement that, and that way we don't have to pay outside consultant, which the cost would increase at that point as well. So some of the major goals are listed here of us using the AVMR programming in, in our district, and you'll notice the first three have a specific district improvement goal connected to that. And so that's one of the elements that we refined last year through our DEIC process of coming up with our district improvement plan. We'll continue on going AVMR Course 1 and Course 2 training. We'll also increase the number of our AVMR-trained teachers using the assessments to dig deeper into their student needs, so teachers are able to have a different type of math conversation with parents, as well as in student intervention team meetings, or otherwise known as sit meetings. Embed AVMR instructional activities and assessment tasks in the district math curriculum documents, which that's the piece that we're walking into starting next week with our learning, with our curriculum writing team. And then always exploring ways to provide continual professional development to increase implementation. And so, want to share some numbers of our teachers that were actually trained. These two little pictures are pictures that I've taken during our training. Those are actual folks from our district. And so, Course 1 is that foundational piece, and we have about 86% of our K-4 general education educators, specifically in the math arena, trained. You'll also notice that there's a pretty large component of our teachers in the special education arena that have been trained, and then the number is a little bit less in the fifth and sixth grade, but the, the special education teachers in intermediate and middle, there is a higher percentage because it fits their needs a little more. Course 2, the number is a little bit smaller because our focus has really been on that Course 1 to lay that foundational work, and so as we build that, that number will increase as well. But you'll also notice that it's more of the K, the elementary pieces, and that only is grades 1 through 4 because that work, that learning that from that Course 2 is really more appropriate for first grade, it fits in with the content that they're learning in that grade. Just a few things that I have gathered from teachers and the pieces that they have shared with me. It says that the hands-on practice helped to me, or to better understand how I can serve all my students and tailor instruction on an individual level. It says, "My new knowledge and understanding allows me to do a better job finding gaps in my student understanding and planning instructional activities to close those gaps. The games are quick and easy to make, directions are clear, and they are fun. I can include these in small group instruction and math workstations." The yellow one makes me smile because I love the, the honesty within it. It says, "I loved it, the information is great, but it's a lot. I just hope I remember it and use it well." That's the important piece of the embedded elements within our curricular documents. And the last one says, "AVMR has been an eye-opening experience, and I'm excited to see how this will impact teaching and planning mathematics within our district." Here's a few pictures that I've taken when I've gone out. Here's a few pictures that I've taken when I've gone out to visit classrooms. These are some of the activities that the teachers have learned about during the training. And then even one time, I went to Pebble Creek's Math Day. It's usually around Christmas time, and it's really fun to see the kids teaching their parents how to play some of these games that the teachers learned as they brought them back to the classroom. One of the pieces that it's important to think about AVMR is not just the AVMR assessments alone, that we can use that in order to look at all of our areas. So this quick slide is about our K-2 Universal Screener, which is a different assessment tool, but you can kind of look at how well the implementation has happened through our AVMR. And so on the vertical axis, it says, "The percentage of students above the 25th percentile." What we typically look at for intervention is any students that fall below the 25th percentile. And so that's specifically our intervention students, but then also the learning that teachers get within the AVMR training, it can help all kiddos. And so you can see that there's been some increase in kindergarten. There's a little bit of an implementation dip probably from the 1516 school year to 1617 in first grade, but then there's been a steady increase for grade 2. And so my expectation is, as we look at this data again this year, then we'll also continue to see some increase for our student understanding. Some of the challenges for our program is time. You talk to any teacher, it's giving up about four days of their classroom time. Is it going to impact what I'm doing? And so many of them aren't too sure about that at the very beginning, but when they finish those four days, they're like, "Okay, Jennifer, yeah, I get it. Like, these four days were worth it because I needed to be a learner as well to dig in." And then delivering the one-on-one assessments that AVMR provides for students, it's important to hear from our kiddos about that time. It's pretty valuable within that classroom. One other challenge that we've had is just the common assessment for our system for capturing the AVMR assessment data, where our campuses are capturing the data, but to be able to look at it currently in historical views from my seats, as well as the principal seat and the classroom teacher and the interventionist as well. So that's been one of the pieces that's been a little bit of a challenge. As we end, some needs or growth is to create an additional online, on-demand, and face-to-face professional development options for our teachers to continue with their understanding and for their implementation, and continue to address that how to best leverage AVMR assessments and activities within the teaching and learning cycle, and develop that standardized system to capture that AVMR data. And so with that, that's the end.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any comments, questions? I'll start off. I appreciate the efforts. I do have one question about it. So this focuses on the recovery and remedial?
It can focus on all students, depending on where their entry point and where their level of understanding is. So what it could be, I could be a fourth grade student, and I have a lack of understanding in sequencing. So that could cause a problem with addition and subtraction, mainly subtraction because of the backwards counting piece. But then I might be able to, as the teacher, be able to say, "This is where the kiddo is currently, and how do I scaffold that learning in order to get them where they need to try to fill in that gap?" But then I also could be a fourth grader, that I'm past that, and what do I know currently about that student to be able to continue pushing them forward, not just filling in gaps? It can also push kids forward as well.
Okay. What else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Smith.
Thanks.
A student? Okay. Do they have a card? Sorry.
You want to come back to that later?
Well, let's see. I mean, I'm going to see what it is, see if it's an agenda item or... Because there may be H2. Okay, it is not for an agenda item. So... Yeah, what... Hold on just a second. We'll get it before we go into executive session. So we'll go ahead and hit H2 and H3, and then we'll do it. Okay, H2. Receive a presentation of Birth to Five Head Start Program Outcomes. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. As part of your role as a CSISD Board of Trustees, you have a... We partner with the Head Start Program in kind of a dual governance role. And one of the things that we must do each year in our role of governance at the school district is receive a presentation on Birth to Five Head Start Program Outcomes. We're looking at Birth to 2, early head start, and then 3- to 5-year-olds with a regular head start. So with more information on the Head Start outcomes is Dr. Penny Trammell, Chief Academic Officer. Dr. Trammell.
Good evening. Loud, sorry. Tonight, we come to you to share a little bit about the five outcomes of our Birth to Five Head Start Program that we are required to share. This changed in 2016 when the standards were revised and the framework was created with five new standards. And it was actually published and, at that time, required for reporting. The five standards are language and literacy, social-emotional development, approaches to learning, cognition, and perceptual motor and physical development. If we look at the language and literacy, you'll see in yellow what we report to TEA, and you'll also see what we measure in the area of language and literacy. So some of these items are aligned to our assessments in kindergarten, which gives us some nice comparable data as we look vertically in the curriculum to kindergarten readiness. If you notice where it says monitoring, we look at the four areas that we are reporting to TEA. B stands for Beginning of the Year Assessment. M stands for Middle of the Year Assessment, which we just completed, and we'll be doing End of the Year Assessments and after April-ish. You'll notice that in the All Student category, in rapid letter naming and rapid vocabulary, we're doing pretty well. And that is with the rigor increasing in those areas. So of course, the benchmark for success is higher at the middle of the year than it is at the beginning of the year. The phonological awareness and early writing is consistent with what we reported last year at the end of the year, when we didn't really have a lot of comparable data. You will notice that we will have in this year's district improvement plan some targeted steps for those two areas in our Head Start and Pre-K program. As we look at the Framework 2 standards, social-emotional development, these are some indicators of what we look at in young children as we measure those standards. If we look at how the children scored overall, we look pretty good. A little bit of a dip in Head Start, Pre-K, right at the mark where we started at the beginning of the year in their social-emotional development. Approaches to Learning is the third category. We look at flexibility. That could be transition, creativity, dramatic play. Do the students show curiosity? Do they have self-regulation or self-control emotionally or behaviorally? And as we look at how we're doing in that area, our kids are learning those things and are doing a really good job at the middle of the year. The next item is cognition, and this aligns really well to areas that we measure in grades aligned as we go up in elementary school with mathematical development, scientific reasoning, and social studies. Now, we covered literacy earlier, so these are the other three core areas. If we look at how our students are doing, we do notice a slight dip. Again, the rigor increases, but we need to look more carefully at that to see why, and then we need to address that in the curriculum. The last area is a perceptual motor and physical development. Obviously, in young children, we want them to develop their gross motor skills, which is walking, jumping, running, those kinds of things, as well as their fine motor skills and visual motor skills, as well as healthy habits, hygiene, those kinds of things. And as we look at how our students are doing, they're doing exceptionally well in that area. So with that, that's a report on the status of our framework outcomes for our Birth to Five Head Start Program. And I've just attached the reporting components for the different tables. And I would ask if you have any questions.
Thank you for that, and I'm glad to hear that particularly the early writing and the cognition are going to be focuses for the district improvement plan. If you remember, will you help us focus on that when we hit that, so you can tell us, yeah, that's why we did it?
Sure.
And remind us of this report?
Absolutely.
Hopefully, we'll all remember that right. But anyway, thank you for that. Other questions, comments?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Takes us to item H3. Receive a presentation on CSISD Learner Profile. Dr. Ely.
Mr. President, members of the board, our last presentation this evening focuses on the College Station Independent School District Learner Profiles, work that we've been doing as an administrative team to really imagine what it is that we want for our students as they move through our system, as they walk across the stage and graduate from College Station ISD. What is it that we want, that we dream for our kids to be able, not only to know, but to be able to do, and to embody as human beings? And so it's been fantastic work that we have thoroughly enjoyed as a team. And Dr. Trammell's here to talk a little bit about how we developed that, what we came up with, and really how this is permeating the work that we do, not only in curriculum, but in our community-based accountability system in other ways, that this profile of a learner in College Station ISD is permeating the work that we do. So with that, Dr. Trammell.
Sure. As we started evaluating our programming last year, we had a lot of different things that were guiding our work. We had the board's parties and commitments, the board's beliefs. We had our beliefs that aligned with the board's beliefs. There were a lot of things out there. We had, you know, each life, each day, each hour. We had the three Cs, the three Rs. We had a lot of stuff to help us. We felt like we needed a little bit of focus, and so we went about developing a vision statement from all of that. And to do that, we used the board's commitments to the community, the board's beliefs, and the beliefs of the success team, which is all the departments in the district, including campus leadership. We came up with this vision statement that we felt was reflective of the combination of all beliefs. And this is the statement. I won't read it to you. You are welcome to read it, but we felt like it encompassed the whole child, from the academic parts of a child to the personal wellness part, to just the social-emotional part. We then felt a need for kind of a north star. So a lot of company, a lot of people have vision statements and mission statements. But there's something called a graduate profile, or the profile of a learner, that many districts use as kind of their north star. So it really focuses work. So basically, we needed a learner profile. And to be succinct, a learner profile is a document that a school or district uses to specify the cognitive, personal, and interpersonal competencies that students should have when they graduate their system or their school. And so that is what we created as a team in our district to guide our work. In order to do that, we worked together with our beliefs, again, because everything centers from our beliefs. It's why we come to work and do what we do every day for kids. We began that process by writing them on Post-its. Again, we included your beliefs on Post-its and included those in our work. We went through a process called affinity mapping, which is where we grouped like beliefs to kind of come up with some categories. We came up with five categories, and then we fleshed out some defining statements that we felt passionately about for our kids based on those beliefs under those categories. Here are the five areas or five categories that our beliefs fell into for our students. Communication and collaboration. Critical thinkers and problem solvers is another area we wanted them to develop. We wanted them to be socially engaged citizens. We wanted them to seek knowledge and understanding. And we wanted them to have personal wellness. As we look at each of those areas, a summary would be, and communicates and collaborates, practices shared responsibility and flexibility in working collaboratively and communicating productively. We feel businesses want this. We feel even if they are, you know, on the PTO or on the school board, this is a skill that they need. Personal wellness, we want them to practice healthy habits and know what those are and maintain healthy and social and emotional well-being. We want them to seek knowledge and understanding, which we see as they demonstrate intrinsic motivation to learn, and they possess solid foundational skills and consciousness about themselves and others. Contribute as a socially engaged citizen. We want them to take initiative, to give back to their community and the world, and we want them to be, to model a demeanor of mutual respect for all people. And we want them to be critical thinkers and innovative problem solvers, and we want them to see adverse situations and problems as opportunities to be creative, to persevere, and to overcome obstacles. You know, we talk a lot about grit nowadays, and the first time, we have a lot of, you know, parents who come to the rescue of kids, and they don't allow them to struggle for themselves. And so many times, when they get to college or on a job and they encounter a barrier of some kind, they don't have the skills to work through that. They don't have the grit to get through it. They don't know what to do. They give up. So we want them to develop those skills and to be creative and problem solve for themselves. So this is our CSISD learner profile. It is on our website. So if you go to our website and you go About CSISD, you will see the learner profile is the top item. Here is our symbol with our five categories, and then you'll see where the success team kind of fleshed out and defined those five areas in specificity. So you can see exactly what we felt was very important for our students to graduate with in each of these five areas. As we go back to the slides, I wanted to just talk for just a second about how this document impacts our work. So we use this in curriculum and instruction because we want to provide opportunities to develop these five areas, and that is intentionally embedded in the curriculum. Principals use it at campus to provide opportunities for what they provide for kids on their campus. Citizenship, service learning, you know, we want them to be citizens that give back to their communities, so it's important to give them opportunities to do that, to teach them about being a good citizen. Social-emotional health, it's important for us to teach them how to take care of themselves and, you know, be healthy for life. Our community-based accountability system to report to parents on how are we doing in these areas with their children. Our district improvement plan, you should be able to see things that we are doing to build these qualities in our graduates. You know, professional learning opportunities for teachers to help support them in meeting these characteristics in our students. Our long-range technology plan, so we have an obligation to teach digital citizenship, to teach digital literacy, you know, life skills in those areas. Our budget should also back this up. So pretty much every facet of our organization should be driven so that when our kids graduate, we have done a good job of equipping them with the attributes in this learner profile. We've also worked on a leadership profile, which we're excited... We've also worked on a leadership profile, which we're excited to share more about at a later time, and an educator profile. So anyway, this is kind of our north star for our work because kids are what we're about. So any questions or...
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I really like that. I have kind of a different perspective than I did even a couple weeks ago on that. I have a senior, and he's, I know some of y'all have been through this before, but he's having to do these essay questions, and they ask things like, "How has CSISD prepared you to meet your goals in life?" You know, things like that. And he goes, "What should I say, Dad?" And I'm like, "So I'm going to send him to this website and say, 'This is what you should have learned.'"
Very good.
Not really. But it really does add some clarity, and it allows kind of a focus and for people to be very intentional about evaluating what they're doing and the choices they're making, and are we getting to these desired ends? So I really do like it. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's this kind of work that makes me really proud to be a part of this district. So in seeing all of this, and now I am seeing how, I mean, you and I have talked about this, how it's all really starting to come together for me with all the different committees that I'm able to be a part of. And this is the first time I've seen this learner profile presentation, and it really is making sense now. And I'm proud of you guys for doing this and working so hard and seeing the bigger picture and really educating the whole student. So, thank you.
Yeah, and thank the principals and all the departments as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trammell.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go back now to item F, hearing of citizens. Let me pull up my thing to read. Just one second. During this time, public comments are welcome on non-agenda items. The board will listen, but the Open Meetings Act prevents us from responding to speakers. Please complete the note card and give it to the executive assistant. Done that. The public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Each person has one opportunity at the microphone regardless of minutes used. Unused minutes may not be accrued by another speaker. The executive assistant will time the comments and alert the president when time has expired. The board will not allow derogatory comments. Okay, so we have one card, so you can step up to the podium, and you can, I guess, give us your name and address, and then you will have three minutes. Oh, Andrew, is it Mays? Okay.
My name is Andrew Mays. I am a freshman at Anam Consolidated High School. And I am here to speak to you about the AP point change. But like I said, my name is Andrew Mays. I'm limping today because I've been, I haven't not been beaten in AP classes, but instead I fell off a roof and got clipped by a car. However, I'm here tonight because as an AP student, I would like to express my support of working with district leaders such as yourselves, and Ms. Trammell and Ms. Perry, who I hope will return on this August board, and request that we change the point system and award AP students such as myself the extra point we have earned. Honors classes are solid, but the AP program in our district is tough and demanding, and many of us feel as though we have earned the additional point given to students in the district across the US. And I hope to see this changed soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more cards? Okay. Well, that will take us to item L1. The board will meet in executive session to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the Personnel Matters Closed Meeting exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. If we're going to take any action, we will return to open session, but none is expected. You're welcome to hang around and wait, but as stated, no action is expected. So with that, we will move to executive session.